I have something I want to bring up. Can we get to that? First thing early on. This, this is. No more. There aren't really minutes. Really, they're not out the camp. You're looking at it now. Uh, no, but there was, I had three phone calls today. The meeting was actually happening here. Well, just after was actually in. Maybe there's not. It's not. Yeah, at least those front lights are on. You can see the crowd pretty better. Mr. Boland, how are you, Sheriff? Good, sir. How are you? Good. Oh, that's better. Nate, Nate, he's giving backup. Thank you, really. Me too, sir. They put it in. Me too. That's what you made us talk about. I agree with Adam and Jason. And, and you know, we need to do that. That's the best way to. Your vote being enough, like you and I are. I'm not. I agree with Adam and Jason. And, and you know, we need to do that. That's the best way to. So Wednesday's meeting for the town board. I think it's because they were kind of special. Yeah, so never end. Yeah. Yeah, at least those front lights are on. You can see the crowd pretty better. Hope you can hear Mr. Boland. How are you, Sheriff? Good, sir. How are you? Good. Oh, Nate, 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 he's giving backup. I understand. You know, I was really asking her whether I needed to go into the. I gotta say something. Did you realize me too, Sheriff? They put it in. Me too. It's been so long. I thought you were. But I do it with this back. It's all about. And that's what you made us talk about. I agree with Adam and Jason. And, and you know, we need to do that. That's the best way to. Your vote being enough, like you and I are. Yeah, I'm. 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 That's. It's not. It's, it's not. It's just small mammals. I need to guard the mammals. She tried to. What, no, I. So that should be. Yes. I thought of. I read that map. White rabbit. Right. Well, now I can't. Seriously. Get out of here. Seriously. Like it gets us on a microphone. No, I do. You do carry out. I think Mike can carry out. Yeah. Mike's, Mike's vote tonight. I don't know. That's the thing is that I don't know. I, I just haven't seen that. Take this. Down. Bring that up. Oh. The, the fans now saw one. About an email where he talks about someone's. Yeah, yeah. So if he's speaking for the group, it's, I don't even know. It shouldn't be any green. Should I? I'm solar. It's like, I can open the thing. I'll be out. He's got, we got hot light. Hold on. I'll come down. You hear who is it? One of your. Yeah. Here. Florida in the eye of the storm or no? No. If everyone, if everyone would like to take a seat, we're, we're gonna begin. We're here, it's kinda getting turned. Wow. Evening, everyone. Like to call the special meeting, uh, Town and Shenango Planning Board to order. Um, can we have a rule call, please?
Here.
Ms. Carnegie.
Ms. Masternardy. No. Uh, Mr. Eldridge.
Here.
Mr. Zener.
Here.
Mr. Danley.
Here.
Mr. Boland.
I'm here.
Okay, first we need to, uh, approve the minutes of our September twenty-ninth Planning Board meeting. Is there any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Can I give a vote?
Mr. Boland.
Aye.
Mr. Carnegie.
Aye.
Mr. Zener.
Aye.
Mr. Eldridge.
Aye.
Mr. Danley.
Aye. We have no advisory opinions and no new business going on to our old business. Uh, wood decision on animal harboring. Mr. Erda, do you have any additional comments?
I had submitted a review back on June tenth and then updated it September eighth just to go over the documents that have been submitted and that I still had some components in review like the SWIP and double checking on flood regulations. Uh, I got the two thirty-nine review ruling by way of getting my letter into them. So I, I do have some questions probably that will still come up, but I didn't write an additional letter for tonight.
Ms. Woods here. Do you have anything that you want to add at this point? I know you, uh, submitted your insurance.
Brian, I was, I was referencing the wrong project, one of the solar ones. On Wood, on Woods, I have no additional information. I'm sorry. Sorry about that, everyone.
I don't have anything additional. I believe that you have the copy of my insurance. I submitted the insurance that was asked for. My liability insurance.
Does anyone on the board have some questions on what she'd submitted or? Okay, if there's no questions on that, let's, uh, continue with the environmental review.
So the board had part one of the short environmental assessment form prepared by the applicant and everyone should have part two, uh, in your packet as well. There's eleven questions since it's the short one. Go through them in order and then if you folks would just respond no or small impact or moderate to large, we'll get through that and determine what environmental significance this project has. So the first question is, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Second is, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Third, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area within the town?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
And finally, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
So hearing the answer of no to each of those eleven questions, it's appropriate to move on to part three where you would consider or make a decision on the environmental significance. At this point, a motion finding a, or making a negative declaration of significance would be appropriate.
I'll make a motion for a negative declaration.
I'll second. Can we have a vote?
Mr. Boland.
Aye.
Mr. Carnegie.
Aye.
Mr. Danley.
Aye.
Mr. Eldridge.
Aye.
Mr. Danley.
Aye. Based on that, we vote part three. You've finished it, so now you can move on to the specialty permit consideration itself. Okay, does, uh, anyone at the board have any other questions for Ms. Woods? For that, um, if not, is there any special considerations that we should be, uh, considering as far as, um, looking at the approval or not approval of, uh, this issue?
So just quick yes or no answers, nothing in depth, okay? No more than five animals was required by the DEC, right?
No, that's not required by the DEC. That's, I put that in.
You put that in, okay. Maintain the log book, DEC regulation?
Yes.
Maximum length of stay of the animals, five days?
I put that in, that's not DEC.
Okay. That's it for me. Because the rabies one is also a DEC, so.
Anyone to have something to add or want to make any changes?
There was a concern, um, in reference to, um, birds of prey, um, by the community. Was that something that you, I know there was a, a picture at least or a mention of it on your Facebook post.
I'm licensed to rehab raptors. They are enclosed and they don't fly loose. They wouldn't be with me if they could fly. I take them to Cornell University for medical treatment and rehab them and then release them elsewhere, same as a small mammal.
How long would they stay under your care?
It would be the same. They would be no different. I have a federal permit for birds and I have a state permit for the small mammals and reptiles.
The size of the animals or you don't deal with any of the large animals or?
No, I'm, I do not. Have a license for large mammal, no. And I would not seek that. I, I would, where I'm at would never pass the inspection for that. I have no desire to work with bears. I'm a squirrel person.
Discuss. Sorry, the ones that the code officer, step four. So, uh. With that in mind, I think many of those clauses, um, echo the sentiments of the Van Tassel family, so, um, keep that in mind. Yeah. So just, I guess to keep the motion short, I could read these first and then motion, or do I have to motion and then read them all?
Either's okay.
Okay. So, um, Randy Shear, the code officer, had put down, just so everyone knows, um, no more than five animals at a time on the property. That is something that she said that the DEC does not require. I think we should require that, maintaining a log book. The DEC requires it. Guess we could add that as well. The maximum length of stay for the animals, five days. At no time shall the African keeper harbor a species listed on the rabies vector. She can anyways. The special permit shall expire in two years. From the date of approval, an applicant must seek renewal prior to the expiration date for the use to continue. A special permit will terminate upon transfer of property. And if there, if there are three notices of violation in twelve months period, the special permit is revoked and cannot be replied, reapplied for two years. And no large animals. And the, uh, she has to hold a liability insurance policy.
In the form that she's presented.
There's no large animals, or did you say? I said large animals. Yep.
It's an insurance policy in the form that she's presented, right? Minimum coverage is being as described in this attachment.
Yes. That is provided. I'll make a motion to approve.
Subject to those conditions.
Subject to the conditions listed.
I'll second the motion.
Diane, may we have a vote?
Mr. Boland.
Aye.
Mr. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Zener.
Aye.
Mr. Eldridge.
Aye.
Mr. Danley.
Aye. Based on that, we vote part three. You've finished it, so now you can move on to the specialty permit consideration itself. Okay, does, uh, anyone at the board have any other questions for Ms. Woods? For that, um, if not, is there any special considerations that we should be, uh, considering as far as, um, looking at the approval or not approval of, uh, this issue?
So just quick yes or no answers, nothing in depth, okay? No more than five animals was required by the DEC, right?
No, that's not required by the DEC. That's, I put that in.
You put that in, okay. Maintain the log book, DEC regulation?
Yes.
Maximum length of stay of the animals, five days?
I put that in, that's not DEC.
Okay. That's it for me. Because the rabies one is also a DEC, so.
Anyone to have something to add or want to make any changes?
There was a concern, um, in reference to, um, birds of prey, um, by the community. Was that something that you, I know there was a, a picture at least or a mention of it on your Facebook post.
I'm licensed to rehab raptors. They are enclosed and they don't fly loose. They wouldn't be with me if they could fly. I take them to Cornell University for medical treatment and rehab them and then release them elsewhere, same as a small mammal.
How long would they stay under your care?
It would be the same. They would be no different. I have a federal permit for birds and I have a state permit for the small mammals and reptiles.
The size of the animals or you don't deal with any of the large animals or?
No, I'm, I do not. Have a license for large mammal, no. And I would not seek that. I, I would, where I'm at would never pass the inspection for that. I have no desire to work with bears. I'm a squirrel person.
With that in mind, I think many of those clauses, um, echo the sentiments of the Van Tassel family, so, um, I'm gonna keep that in mind. Yeah. So just, I guess to keep the motion short, I could read these first and then motion, or do I have to motion and then read them all?
Either's okay.
Okay. So, um, Randy Shear, the code officer, had put down, just so everyone knows, um, no more than five animals at a time on the property. That is something that she said that the DEC does not require. I think we should require that, maintaining a log book. The DEC requires it. Guess we could add that as well. The maximum length of stay for the animals, five days. At no time shall the African keeper harbor a species listed on the rabies vector. She can anyways. The special permit shall expire in two years. From the date of approval, an applicant must seek renewal prior to the expiration date for the use to continue. A special permit will terminate upon transfer of property. And if there, if there are three notices of violation in twelve months period, the special permit is revoked and cannot be replied, reapplied for two years. And no large animals. And the, uh, she has to hold a liability insurance policy.
In the form that she's presented.
There's no large animals, or did you say? I said large animals. Yep.
It's an insurance policy in the form that she's presented, right? Minimum coverage is being as described in this attachment.
Yes. That is provided. I'll make a motion to approve.
Subject to those conditions.
Subject to the conditions listed.
I'll second the motion.
Diane, may we have a vote?
Mr. Boland.
Aye.
Mr. Carnegie.
Yes.
Mr. Zener.
Aye.
Mr. Eldridge.
Aye.
Mr. Danley.
Aye. So it's proved that you'll be getting a special permit to, uh, continue your, um, work and according to those special, uh, conditions in which we just discussed.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the, uh, New Energy Equity, uh, solar, twelve, twelve River Road. Do you have anything to add, um, at this point, Mr. Erda?
Okay, this was the letter I referenced earlier. I had done an initial review from the application to help get the two thirty-nine review rolling with Laura at the county. So you'll see some September eighth comments from me. Um, as I mentioned before, I might have some ongoing review on the stormwater component and floodplain concerns. Uh, it looks like we did get two thirty-nine comments to go through in a little bit as well.
And I understand the applicant is here.
Good evening, I'm Jody Hunt with New Energy Equity.
Sorry, you're in, believe me, the dog.
Sorry. Do you want me to, I can come forward, but then nobody would be able to hear me.
Stay there.
I, I don't have a presentation to make, but I can answer questions if you'd like. I'm also in receipt of the Broom County two thirty-nine review. It was inconclusive and I do, um, my, my legal counsel and I do take issue with their first comment, um, that says that their comments of twenty twenty-four stand. That indicates to me a negligent review of our application materials and we are, we are going over that with counsel and will be responding to Broom County.
Have they removed the barn?
I'm sorry, remove the barn?
Has the barn been removed from the property?
Not that I'm aware of. No, we have, we revised the lot line to address that question of lot line issue. So if that's what you're referring to, Thomas, was the lot line question?
Yeah, so the, the, no panels, nothing will be in front of the barn.
So the lot, the issue of, are there panels in front of a, is that lot line issue has been resolved and that has been resolved with Broom County? Yes.
Tom, I can, I can help with that. So she mentioned that there's a lot line adjustment. So the proposed location of the development is on a separate tax parcel than the location of the residential house. Um, you know, as you noted, there was an issue with location of the panels vis a vis that barn, because the barn was on the parcel with the panels. They have moved the lot line, so the barn is no longer on the parcel where the solar development will occur, thereby avoiding that issue.
Did we get that?
It's in the updated packet.
And then Alex, I know that you had said you were going to review the SWIP and the rest of the application. Um, I can respond to the rest of Broom County's comments with the exception of their comments from twenty twenty-four, which I responded to in November of twenty twenty-five, which is approximately one year ago. Those already have responses and those are on record. Um, the, the remainder of their comments, um, were to rely on your comments from September eighth of this year, which you really didn't have very many of, and I can respond to the rest of those comments this week. Um, if you have any further comments, I'm looking forward to receiving those. As you know, we have been working with the town since before the first moratorium and the new solar law on this project. And, um, we revised our site to meet the new solar law following that original moratorium. We would like to continue with this application. We've stuck by you guys. We have done everything that the planning board has asked us to do. We are still doing that. We are still working with the county. Um, anything else that you would like us to do, Alex, Nate, board? Um, we've jumped through all the hoops so far, so I'm awaiting your next letter. I will respond to the existing ones that, that Renee sent me this past week. Um, as soon as you get it to me, I will get you whatever it is that you are asking me for. But we would like to move forward respectfully. I did, I would like to note that most of the comments from the previous hearing were about flooding and things that don't necessarily affect this project. They were very project specific. There are issues that will come up that you will hear about this specific project and things that do need to be answered to. The majority of them are for the other project, unfortunately.
So certainly, you know, they've, they've updated their project plans, submitted them, you know, the last submission was recent, August or July.
I have a binder if you would like to peruse it.
Alex has one too. Um, I, I think that this is the first meeting since the submission, right?
It is. I wanted to put everything together into one binder for you because I frankly was sick of trying to point to whichever submission it was. So Alex has the twelve inch binder there, yes.
Right. Um, and so, you know, the town declared its intent to be lead agency, excuse me, the planning board, declared that back in April. Diane, the notices went out. Um, now that we've got the new full submission, um, those, that does need to be circulated to all of the interested and involved agencies, so we want to make sure they get copies of that. But otherwise, the planning board is acting as lead agency. And so I would suggest tonight that you folks, uh, begin your review of the environmental impacts. I think we're not going to be in a position to complete it tonight, but certainly on, you're gonna love this, page four hundred and forty-six of the six hundred and ninety-nine page packet is the beginning of the applicant's, uh, analysis of the environmental impacts where they indicate potential project impacts and discuss where and why they believe things may not have an impact or might have an impact, but here's some appropriate conditions. So, um, similarly, I think it would be helpful for you folks tonight to just go through that, indicate, you know, where you might want some further explanation, um, or narrative perhaps prepared by Alex with some assistance from myself, uh, for you to review and kind of next to New Energy's own analysis. Um, and then, you know, again, I don't expect us to finish that tonight, but, you know, that would be, I think, the jumping off point for right now.
Nate, if I may speak to that just for a moment and give some context, I, me drafting that part two of the seeker review for you was not out of the blue. I have ten years of experience in working for the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Region Seven and Region Eight. Um, that's where I started my career as an environmental geologist. Um, I have ten years with them and following that, I worked as an environmental consultant for two different consulting firms. The seeker process is how I came up in this world and it's what I know and love and it's how I got into renewable energy. So that seeker review was done on that note. Um, I have worked as a regulatory agent, um, and I have worked on the other side of this industry. I've also worked for towns in drafting comprehensive plans, so I know very well where you're at. I haven't always been on this, the, the dark side of this process, so to speak. Um, take it for what it's worth, I, I am on the dark side for you all now. Um, I am the developer in this process and that is just a draft. Um, you, you can look at it, you don't have to look at it, but from somebody who helped to draft the seeker regulations and the environmental assessment forms, that is how the DEC takes those assessments.
And it's certainly, you know, I, I appreciate your background and explanation there and I'm sure you appreciate the town planning board's need to, um, review it and have their own engineer comment and provide, you know, his thoughts in a, I think narrative fashion is the best way to present that to the board.
Yes. Yeah, that's all you should do, town. Do you want to give us a lead here?
Yeah, so, so it's part two of the FEAF. It's got 18 wonderful questions that we review.
Are we going to do this now?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's appropriate for the planning board to review and, you know, at least to go through and say, yeah, we really think that this is a very critical item that we want to look into. It'll help direct Alex and myself when we're putting together the narrative on part two. You know, if there's something that the town planning board thinks, okay, not really relevant for this project, then we will spend less time on that.
Sorry, try not to bump this microphone. Okay.
And then for the planning board members who've got laptops up anyway, do you all have, are you on the page that I'm looking at? Yeah. So again, I'm not, I'm not expecting you as the planning board to say, oh, yes, this is no impact, or oh, a moderate to large impact. This is just understanding from you folks which items you think really need to be very thoroughly addressed. Everything should be thoroughly addressed, but this is things that you want us to focus on in particular. So the first question is impact on land. The proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. And then there's numerous sub-questions involving construction on land where depth to water tables less than three feet. Proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater. Proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. The proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. Proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. And then the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area. There's also a potential other impacts section where you can flag any other concerns that you can, might think of that might need to be reviewed and considered specifically. So regarding that question, again, I'm not expecting you to answer, yes, this is absolutely an impact, but are there any particular questions outlined in those sub-questions or the overall concept of will this have an impact on land that you can identify as being of particular concern and needing some additional review?
The, the water table, question A. And in E, the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than a year or in multiple phases. I assume this will be phases to the project, so.
Do you want me to respond to these here, or is it, is it appropriate for me to respond here, or not appropriate?
I'll leave that to the board, I mean.
Sure. I can see her responses, but yeah. Go ahead, Jordan.
The water table here is, on average, more than six feet, so that question doesn't apply here. And construction would happen in multiple phases as required by New York State Ag and Markets. We're required to do that, so yes. And that's to protect topsoil.
How much, or rather, will there be an excavation and removal of natural material?
I don't know if I have those numbers for you right here without flipping through this binder and site plans. It is on the site plans. There's limited grading here, because it's fairly flat, and we are staying out of sloped areas, but the grading that would occur would happen per Ag and Markets guidelines, and it would be limited to a removal of topsoil, and stockpiling of that topsoil has to happen adjacent to where we're removing it from, and it has to be stored and segregated so that it can be relocated where it was removed from. And this is because it's an agricultural property. So all of those specifications for soil removing for the access road or for the equipment pad, and those are the only two areas where we're really moving soil. Those are really, really defined by New York State Ag and Markets, and those are laid out very specifically, both in the SWIP that you have, Alex, and on the civil design set.
And then, speaking of the SWIP, I'm assuming stormwater runoff and erosion is of concern to the planning board, and you'd like Alex to obviously very thoroughly review that. I've seen a bunch of head nods.
Yes.
Are there any other impacts on land that you folks can just think of? I know it might be putting you on the spot, so you can always come back to it later if you think of something as we move through. Okay, move into the second question. Impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site, e.g., cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, and caves. The applicant's indicated that she believes there's no unique or significant features or no natural landmarks on the site. Are you guys aware of anything in particular that might be something that should be looked at particularly?
No, I don't believe we have.
And impacts on surface water. Proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. And then those, you know, e.g., streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. And then you'll see the sub-questions there about creating new water bodies resulting in an increase or decrease of over 10% in the surface area of a body of water, dredging, construction within or adjoining a freshwater tidal wetland, turbidity in a water body. And I know the SWIP is pointed to in the applicant's proposed responses here as kind of a handling of these types of issues. Is that largely right, Jody?
That is correct. The other thing I want to address is in part D, on page six of this document. We are going to be requesting the new DEC wetlands general permit for this project. So.
Which covers everything.
It does cover everything. Yeah, it's, it's just like the stormwater general permit that we submit the SWIP for. So we'll, we'll be doing the same thing for the wetlands general permit. We do have the jurisdictional determination back from the DEC, and while previously they had not taken jurisdiction of these wetlands, they have now taken jurisdiction of these wetlands, so we have to regroup, and now we have 100-foot buffers on these wetlands. We are still not impacting the wetlands. We are staying outside of them, but we are slightly in that 100-foot buffer. The general permit will cover that. And that's our, that's what we're doing. We're going through the process with the DEC for the general permit.
And the general permit would allow you to construct within the buffer?
Yes. It's very, very limited, and I don't, I don't have that paperwork with me this evening, but that can be submitted along with, I mean, that's required to be submitted prior to construction and building, and similar to the SWIP, the Speedy's permit.
Right, so Alex, I'm assuming the board will want to know a lot more about what the potential impacts of being within the buffer could be. And just in general, even if you're outside the buffer, the buffer's there as a DEC regulatory issue, but specific site issues might still lead to impacts on the wetlands, even if you're outside of the buffer, that the planning board should be mindful of potentially. Do we have an Army Corps jurisdictional report?
You should have the Army Corps one, yes.
Do you know which page it's on?
Is that a quiz? I do not know what page it's on. Oh.
That, that part D, you just say that you expect a response from DEC for the one piece by July, but on the Army Corps, let's see, somewhere, somewhere the county was looking at where you thought you'd have a response in December. I did not find that December reference yet, though.
I will get that to you, because I, to be honest with you, do not remember what page it is on in here, but.
Yeah, either, I guess, supply it or just highlight that.
Our full wetlands delineation is a few pages back from this, so if you flip through, I'll find it for you during this meeting. I'm sure the hearing will go long enough, and I will find it for you.
And then, not to distract you from finding that also, but you, did you say you do have a response back from DEC?
Yes. I'm surprised they didn't copy you on the new JD, but yes, we do have the new JD. Everything on it was the same, except for they took jurisdiction of the wetlands.
Right. Can you just supply that updated letter?
I certainly can.
And then I think that kind of handles it for the impact on water, surface water, rather. The next question is impact on groundwater, which asks the board to consider the proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or in aquifer. So then you'll see from the sub-questions, there's a lot of questions about requiring a new water supply, or exceeding withdrawal capacity rate of a local supply or aquifer. Most likely, I would think, the major issue that the board would want to really review is the proposed action may result, nope, nope. Yeah. So it really would be the other potential impacts. I know, I think I've heard the public comment before, the concern that's about the potential for solar farms to introduce a contaminant into the soil, presumably through the construction process, or if there was, say, like, a fire and then causing contamination as a result of that. I'm assuming that's something that you'd like us to also really look at in the narrative that Alex and myself work on.
I addressed those in a later section with health and safety impacts.
Yes, we would like to make sure you address those.
Section 16. I did not address that. I will address that.
Okay. And then question five, of course, is, where'd it go? Scrolling back. Flooding. Impact on flooding. So as you know, Jody, it's within the designated 100-year and 500-year floodplain. I think I've heard recently that the state is now requiring flood damage, you know, it's not just the 100-year floodplain that applies to the flood damage laws, now even the 500-year. Is that right, Alex? I think I heard that as of January 1st. So the question is, the proposed action may result in development on lands subject to flooding. There's obviously a potential here because of where the location is, and then you can see all these sub-questions. Again, I'm assuming that this is a question the board really wants a very hard look at.
So, Jody, 2006, this area got inundated with flooding, and that property there was flooded, and we were told then it was, that was a 100-year flood, we'll never see that again in 100 years. And then five years later, we got whacked again, and numerous people's areas, houses and businesses were flooded and destroyed or damaged, and that area was completely underwater. So putting a solar farm there, which is going to be surrounded by a chain-link fence, is that what it's going to be surrounded by?
So I've put some schematics in here. It is, it's not a regular, it's a breakaway fence hinged at the top, so it is, it is made for flood-prone areas.
So if it floods, that fence will come down, and it's not going to catch debris? But the posts and stuff, will that be catching debris?
The posts should not catch debris. No, I mean, they, they're, they're fence posts, so they may catch vines or little things like that, but it's not going to be the, the whole fence catch-all. The fence is made, if you look at page nine, the fence is made to stay attached at the top and wash, sort of like a door opening, and let everything wash through while not letting the panel of fence itself wash away.
Has this design been used anywhere? Has it been, like, did it happen somewhere?
I, I didn't want to say this isn't, this isn't new, but yes, this is not new design. The world is not new to flooding, right? We're, we're watching this happen currently, right? I mean, we're watching a major flooding event about to happen in Jamaica. Flooding is a very real thing, and it's going to get a lot more real with climate change. Floods are not unpredictable, as the county's letter said, but climate change is going to make things happen in a more harsh way. We're going to see more flooding, and solar projects in floodplains are not new. We've been doing this for a long time. We deal with it by, oh, I'm sorry, we, we deal with solar projects in floodplains in very specific ways, by raising the lower edge of the panel up, by keeping the electric components of the project, like the transformers and, you know, all of the really crucial electrical equipment out of the floodplain, having breakaway fence panels like we, what we've done here.
Thank you.
Any other specific things regarding flooding the board would like Alex to review and really address, other than just the broad issues and the one raised? Okay. Question six is impact on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. I'm assuming solar panels don't actively emit anything.
They, they do not.
Question seven, impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. And then you can see from the sub-questions, of course, you know, causing a reduction in population or loss of individuals, of any threatened or endangered species that use the site, found on, over, or near the site, reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare or threatened or endangered species. Proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern, conservation need, et cetera. I know some comments in the past focused on the eagle that lives nearby. I know, Ms. Hunt, you've provided information about that before. I'm assuming the planning board would like Alex to really diligently review that information specifically about the eagle. And then I know for other projects, the, in the town, there, I don't recall if this has been mentioned about the Dematos one, but comments and concerns that the DEC, I'll say, general information about location of native, or excuse me, endangered species may not be fully accurate. I'm recalling specifically, again, about the other project. Somebody's seen some bats up there, even though it might have been identified as, like, not an area for bats. So, you know, this is not, I guess we can ask Alex to really look into, you know, are there actually, to the best he can anyway, and he might recommend hiring somebody to go out and do some samples, but.
If I may respond to that now, I think, I can't speak for the other project, but I can speak for the studies that have been on this site, and we have had boots on the ground, both regulatory, Army Corps, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, DEC, and our consultants, third-party consultants that we've hired. There, there's, there's no evidence of those things, or we've been cleared. So the bald eagle is across the river. The project is, is required to not disturb that animal. We have the jurisdictional determination that, from the DEC, that has specific requirements for not disturbing that nest, and those have to be, the guidelines on that have to be followed. And there, there's also critical habitat that was listed on the IPAC by U.S. Fish and Wildlife for things like a monarch butterfly. Those were all cleared, and those weren't just, you know, the, the mapping from DEC Enviromapper or IPAC, but those have been field-reviewed. So we have had boots on the ground. There's just no habitat there.
And, and I don't recall this on the tip of my tongue, but do, you know, you said boots on the ground, do your application materials provide the dates when those boots were on the ground and who those persons were?
Yeah, they're in the, the wetlands delineation notes, and there's also field notes from our consultants.
And so then, you know, I think it's really relevant for Alex to review those things and then call into question if he has any concerns about that information that's been provided.
Alex, let me know if you need further information on dates and surveys and what was done.
And I would think the actual, I mean, to the extent we can get them, the actual reports or whatever it is generated by these various persons and agencies regarding this particular area.
Most of that should have already been submitted, but I realize it's boxes.
Yeah, it's, and that's where I'm going to rely and trust on Alex to really look at that. And, I mean, obviously we'll double-check, but, you know, in his report to the board, he should be flagging and referencing those things.
And just for clarification, with the property line change and stuff, the project mostly resides in an overgrown field. There was only like a half acre of trees or something that were going to be removed.
It's very limited, and I know that there is some discussion about there being tree removal now. And then some of that has over, has, has grown, right? Since, since we leased this property, there has not been any work done on that property. So yes, it is, it is more overgrown now than it was three years ago. It's still not bat-harbinacula, yeah.
Then question eight is impact on agricultural resources. Just simply, the proposed action may impact agricultural resources. So Alex, this is in the County Ag District?
Yes, we're still in an ag district and the adjacent properties are as well, from a New York State ag and market standpoint.
And then we'll have to do an agricultural data statement and send that off to the ag and markets, or no? Jody, within this, did you go see your ag data statement? I know there was discussion at one point that there was no active farm nearby, but then we had a neighbor indicate that there was.
You, there is an ag data statement in here. It is an appendix to this document, actually. And on there, it does say that there is, we answered no to that. There is no registered agricultural operation, nothing registered with the county, with the state, or with the USDA within 500 feet of this property. I know that Jeff and Karen have said that there is a sheep grazing operation to the, on the property to the north, and I can see that on photos. It's not registered anywhere. I can put yes on that form, but that operation is not a registered operation. If the board would like me to put yes on that form, I will. It, it does not qualify as a registered ag operation.
So Alex will be following up on that facet. And then I see, you know, the soil classifications. How much information do you have about the exact percentages in there?
Right down to the exact percentages. There, it's right on the EAF.
Okay.
And it's also on, we've got soil mapping in the civil design set.
And then I recently done an environmental review of another client's action involving agricultural district information. And it was helpful for the board reviewing to understand just, you know, total how much of the prime farmland or whatever the grade this soil is within the town. And then on this project site to understand, you know, if this was, this was the only prime farmland, not that it is, but if it were, that would be important, even though there's much other land in the town. So Alex, if you could try to, I think, delve into the specifics for those types of issues. Any other particular concerns about impact on ag? Impact on aesthetic resources. Land uses of the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. This might be one of the most significant questions, I think, that have been raised by the public. Are there particular issues that the planning board would like Alex to investigate further?
If I may, the aesthetic resources are specifically limited in this category to ones that are adopted by the New York, by the state, they...
Well, that's fair. I'll give you that the, I think the item I'm mentioning is more appropriate for a different question.
Correct, correct.
So she is, she is accurate, aesthetic resources are specific. I don't know if, has the Shenango River been designated as anything of particular significance? No? So I, I guess just Alex double-checking.
When they, when they were here last time and provided the photos, I remember that, it was, there was, there was lots of loopholes. We asked about it and none of them came back.
When you go through your comprehensive plan, you will go through all of this?
Yeah, I think the item I was thinking of is the question 18, consistency with community character, which really talks about the proposed action being inconsistent with the architectural scale and character of the area. So going back to, where were we? Question 10, is it an impact on historic and archaeological resources? May occur interadjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. I'm not recalling if there have been any particular comments raised about this being a significant concern.
The letter from SHIPO with their clearances in the packet.
Right. Impact on open space and recreation might result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource. It's designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Alex, we don't have an open space plan, space plan, right? Is there any particular items under this question that you folks would like us to really dive into? Question, how well does impact on critical environmental areas? There are no designated critical environmental areas within the town, so there's nothing to really otherwise review on that one. Question 13 is impact on transportation. Proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. You'll see, you know, in the applicant's submission, they indicate a, they believe minimal traffic during construction and negligible during operation. They believe a project generating fewer than 100 peak hour vehicle trips per day would not result in any significant increases in the traffic. Then they list some peak daily trips as being between 10 and 30 heavy vehicles and 20 and 40 light vehicles. You have not, is there a particular, I apologize, if it's in here, I remember it, but is there a designated road use plan? You know, what's the route that you're planning on taking?
We have not put together a road use plan.
So I, I think the planning board needs to see your plan for that. I mean, I know how to get there, and I assume that's the way you would go, right? River, road, probably...
There aren't that many different ways to get there, but if, I mean, we can put together a road use plan. That's something we would typically do with building, at the building permit phase. But we can do that now, if that would help.
Yeah, we, I think it's important for the planning board to understand, yes, this is the road that you will be taking, because, I mean, the exit there is, if you're taking the exit, I'm thinking you will, right? It's right by Shenango Valley High School and there's a lot of traffic there. I mean, that place gets backed up.
Road use plans take into account, you know, weights of trucks and school districts and the times that school buses are coming and going. I have little kids too, so I, I fully understand, yeah.
Right, so we, we do need to see that. And then, once you propose that, you know, the planning board can really understand, okay, what other concerns? You know, I'm not sure that the schools have necessarily, you know, I mean, I can tell you, CV is going to want to know if you're going to use that exit. And they will have concerns flagged undoubtedly about when you're using it and, but probably mainly when. But I understand from another project in the town that there's potentially a lot of pedestrian traffic along that exit, you know, over the bridge, across the highway, which would also, I'm sure, be of real concern to the public and the planning board.
Would that, that would then stem into like road bonding or having them...
Yeah, once, once we have a proposed plan, you know, that's when you folks can really understand, okay, is, is this an okay plan or do we need to put conditions on it? Do we want to work with them to identify an alternate route? Do you ultimately say, oh, gosh, there's really no way that we think we can do this? Well, you know, I, we'll see what they propose. And then, yes, eventually there'd be a road use agreement in place that would require bonding for the roads and repair of any damage caused by truck traffic.
Every time, every time, there is always, yeah, always a road use repair, yeah.
The next question is impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. I guess I'd like to think it wouldn't, because it's supposed to be generating energy, but...
Correct, and there were also some comments about power outages and how unstable the, the grid and the infrastructure is here in the community. I'm from a small town too, I live in Palmyra, New York, so we have power outages too. And solar energy, especially community solar, is supposed to be helping with that. It is supposed to be helping to feed into the grid. And there have been some comments made that these projects are, you know, feeding the grid in New York City, and that is patently untrue. This power would be used locally. Electricity is sort of like a water supply. It's used closest to where it's produced. So, you know, the idea is that these projects would help to stabilize the grid. And solar companies, for better or worse, do come in and work with utilities and spend millions of dollars on updating the grid.
So are there any particular concerns that the board would like to review as part of its environmental review for this question?
No.
Okay. The next is impact on noise, odor, and light. Proposed action may or may not cause an increase in those things. I think that this is also one that's been flagged as being very concerning to the community. And you'll want Alex to do just a hard dive on all of this as well. Aside from, so we talk about noise, odors, outdoor lighting, they mentioned glint and glare. Probably can't think of too much else for those things.
The glare analysis was already submitted.
Right.
Okay.
Can you just clarify, I know we've heard it before, but what's the pole type that you're going to utilize? Are you driving them, augering them, helical, hammered?
So we haven't done our geotechnical investigation yet, but typically, these will be driven.
Okay.
Especially in this, in this sort of subsurface. I mean, it's most likely these will be driven.
Nate's asking me about geotech in reference to that, so how far do you drive before you, like, if you hit rock, when do you auger?
Again, it depends on the geotech, and I don't usually follow these sites all the way into construction. I'm a permitting manager. We have to get, we, in, in a flood zone like, or a floodplain like this, we, we have to make sure that, that the panels are stable, right? These, these panels are a little bit higher up off the ground, so we also have to make sure that they can handle the wind and snow load. I, I don't know, is the short answer here. I don't know how far we would have to get them into the ground.
Glenwood is a good location to go to, if they're still driving piles to listen to. It's close to town.
The one in Dickinson? So you, you've not done the geotechnical analysis yet, so some of those items that you just mentioned are you would normally do during the building permit process?
Correct. Geotechnical investigations are allowed. It's a lot of drilling and it's a lot of drilling through rock. Towns typically don't like us to do that because it's invasive and you get a lot of questions from angry neighbors about what are they doing on this property? They're, they've got loud, muddy equipment. It, it looks like we have started drilling our project.
How long would that take to complete the analysis typically? Alex, do you know how long?
It's about, it's a couple of days of drilling.
Right, I, I guess my thought is, there's a lot of people already here questioning it, so they might, they might be okay with a little bit of noise over two days if it results in a geotechnical analysis that tells us if you're going to be pile-driving into rock over there. Or, you know, if that, because that could also result in a change in potentially the site layout, depending on how significant the issues are, I would imagine, or no?
Probably not. We usually don't have to put panels or posts into the ground all that far to make them stable.
So I, I guess the thought would be for the planning board, you know, you folks probably just have Alex review and give a recommendation as to whether he believes a geotechnical analysis should be done at this stage to provide you more information, or if, you know, considering, I guess, the worst-case scenario, which is what we would have to do, that everything needs to be pile-driven and assume, you know, the worst when it comes to the environmental analysis and then just have them, you know, do that. Right, okay.
Yes.
Impact on human health. Proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. You'll see a bunch of the questions there, talk about, well, environmental health issues. So I, I know I mentioned earlier, I think the board is probably concerned about what happens if there's a fire and there's potential, you know, burning and release of the materials within a solar panel. You've, you said you have addressed that in one of the exhibits to the environmental analysis?
Yeah, the materials within a solar panel, what we're talking about is glass, so silicon. If there is, if there is a fire in a solar facility, there's no battery storage here. And I think that that's the misinformation that is, that is out there. Battery storage sites, when there is a fire, there is the potential for a toxic release. There is the need for an evacuation plan. There is a hazardous release to the atmosphere. There is no battery storage at this site. When you have a fire at a solar facility, typically what it is, is grass catching fire from being dry and it's put out the same way you would put out a grass fire at an agricultural property. You, you have the fire department come and put it out. It's not a big deal. It's a grass fire. Electrical fires happen, but they are fairly well-contained. There are shut-off switches that are automatic throughout the system. So if one part of the system were to spark or short-circuit, it shuts down. It's self-limiting. There's never, I shouldn't say never, but there's, I, I have never heard of, there is very rarely a case where a 30-acre solar farm is on fire. That, that is not something that happens. You may have a grass fire in a solar farm, but it's not a toxic situation where you have anything melting or exploding. The only hazardous materials on these sites is a small amount of lead wiring. And this information is in the MSDS sheets that is in the application again. There's a small amount of lead wiring that's used to solder some of the electric components together in the panels themselves, and it's all encapsulated in the glass. And that glass is safety glass. It's made the same way as the windshield on your car is made. So it doesn't shatter, the same way that your windshield doesn't shatter. If there is a hailstorm or it gets hit by a hunter who gets a little overzealous, it's going to stay encapsulated. And again, we use this same sort of lead to solder plumbing or whatever in your basement. This is not a dangerous amount of hazardous material.
So we'll ask Alex to, of course, just do his normal review of the information provided and flag any questions he might have and otherwise move on. Question 17 is consistency with community plans. And then the phrases, the proposed action is or is not consistent with adopted land use plans. And you'll see all the sub-questions there. Just the... Just the, just a normal review of this one.
Yes.
And then, finally, question 18, consistency with community character, which I flagged earlier as probably being of very significant concern to everybody, given it's a solar field going on a piece of ag land with residential facilities very close to it. Anything in particular the board would like Alex to review while he prepares his narrative?
I don't believe so.
Other than perhaps the proposed action being consistent with the predominant architectural scale and character area. And then, possibly F.
F. H.
As for G, we had some property value studies done specific to community solar projects because those are limited in nature. People love to talk about property values in relation to solar projects. Ninety-nine percent of those, those studies that have been done are large-scale solar projects, so those are the big 94C state-funded solar projects. Those are the, you know, 20 megawatts, 150 megawatt solar projects. This is a 2-megawatt solar project. Those studies do show that there can be some effect on property values. Small community solar projects, as evidenced by the studies that I provided to you, do not have noticeable effects on property values, and in some cases actually can increase property values.
If placed in the right location.
If placed, if, and correct. If anybody would like to, if the internet will give you whatever you want.
So, we'll, we'll certainly ask Alex to review the cited reports.
If anybody would like to see these studies, it's all available publicly.
So, that, that brings us through all 18 of those questions. I guess one of the thoughts I had, who are you looking at? That was exactly what I was thinking, the photo locations. There were four provided by the applicant. Do you want Alex to, just keep giving Alex things to do, go out to those same locations, maybe take his own photos, and then, do you have other places that you would like photos from as well?
If I remember correctly, we had them take quite a few photos, yeah.
Right, do you, do you believe that we should do more?
No. It was pretty, it was pretty extensive. Pretty...
Nate, with all due respect, we've been doing this for three years. We've provided three rounds of visual simulations. At some point, this becomes arbitrary and capricious, and I'm going to have to stop providing new information. You've got to limit this.
Jody, I, I certainly understand what you're saying. You know, again, this is, this is the first meeting that the board has had since the resubmission in July or August, you know, and I, there's several new members on the board from previous, you know, I'm not sure how familiar they are. This might be, you know, I mean, they've had your materials. I'm asking the question if the board would like some additional photos. You've heard them all, I think, say that they think you've provided adequate photos.
Fair enough.
I understand from the public that you might have concerns, and if the public would like to provide photos to the planning board, you are more than free to submit photos as well, and I think they'd probably review those as well. So then, that gets us through all 18 of those questions. Alex, you've taken diligent notes. You know, my expectation would be that Alex reviews and prepares the narrative, you know, either saying, yes, in fact, Jody's answer is a good one, or calling, you know, into question some aspects of it, or saying, no, there might be a moderate or large impact that needs to be reviewed here. Jody, you'll get us the identified road plan showing the route that is being proposed, I think, as part of that plan. If you could indicate when, I mean, if it's like all day from, you know, nine to five or seven to seven, when the trucks would be moving, or if it's more limited hours, that would be helpful for the planning board to understand what your limitations you might be willing to propose on that type of traffic activity. That would be helpful. Anything else that the planning board can think of prior to moving on with the discussion tonight?
No, I don't believe, no.
Okay. So then, there is a public hearing being continued for the new energy equity Damato Solar Project. That's 6.1 on your agenda, board. I'm not sure if you want to open that up now, hear from the public about this project, or if you want to move on to the discussion that you folks would have about the Cipriani, and then go to both of the public hearings. Yeah, I'm looking at the online version of the agenda, is what I'm looking at, which has Cipriani on it still.
You should go ahead with the public hearing at this point.
I think it's not a bad idea. You just finished new energy, and let's hear from the public about it, and...
So, I'd like to... So, at this point, we'll, we'll open the public hearing for this project. Same rules as before, it'll be a five-minute limit on the discussion, discussion. This is not a discussion, it's a, not a answer-question-back-and-forth type of a thing. It's merely, you give your name, address for the record, tell us what your concerns are, what your thoughts are. Like I said, you have five minutes to do so. And what we'll do is, if there's several people that want to talk tonight, then what you want to do is kind of come up towards the front when one person's talking, maybe somebody else can come up so we can move this along as quickly as possible. So, at this point, the public hearing is open.
Yes, this is on the River, River Road project.
Right, we want to hear from them first.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Is there anyone that would like to speak?
My name is Jeff Allen, and I live at 1220 River Road, right next to the Damato Solar Farm. I'm here tonight to speak about why this project does not comply with our town code, and why it poses real concerns for our community. In previous meetings, I pointed out that the original proposal would place a solar farm in front of a, the front line of an existing structure, which is against the town code. The updated plan attempts to circumvent by shifting property lines so that the barn is technically on a separate parcel. This is a legal maneuver, but not a solution, and it does not address the underlying issues or the intent of the law. More importantly, the code also clearly states that no more than 50% of a commercial solar farm may be built on prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance. According to the USDA NRCS Soil Survey and our town's own definition, 100% of this proposed project sits on land designated as either prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance. To review, farmland of statewide importance is land critical for producing food, feed, fiber, forage, and oilseed crops. Prime farmland is land with the best combination of physical and chemical characteristics for these agricultural uses. The developer has claimed the land isn't prime because it's flood-prone. Being flood-prone does not change the USDA designation or the town's legal definition. These lands remain protected under town code. Furthermore, the Broom County Soil and Water Conservation District has confirmed these soil designations, and explicitly stated that they do not support development in these areas or in the 100-year floodplain. This independent confirmation underscores that approving this project would not only violate town law, but also go against expert guidance on soil, water, and agriculture. Approving this project as currently proposed would permanently remove high-value farmland from production, set a dangerous precedent, and compromise the integrity of our zoning laws. This is not a matter of preference, it is a matter of compliance with our town code and the protection of our community's agricultural resources. I urge the planning board to enforce the code as written and ensure that this project does not proceed on protected farmland. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Allen, did you have that written down? Is that something you can submit to the clerk? If you do that at some point, just give a copy to Diane so we can, I can backcheck all of that.
Yes, we've also submitted...
That applies to anyone, thank you, tonight.
We also submitted what the US Soil and Water, the maps and the statement from them previously, too. Okay, so, my name's Karen Allen. My husband and I have lived in our home for 23 years. Our farm is directly next to the proposed River Road Solar Farm. Our property line, and my phone just went dark, our property line runs approximately 1,600 feet, that is one-third of a mile alongside the proposed site. Our farm not only supports our family, but also supplies products of our store in downtown Binghamton, Old Bar Market. We raise lamb, rabbits, chickens, and maintain over 70 fruit and nut trees under organic practices. We planted these trees five to seven years ago to make our business more sustainable, and many are just starting to bear fruit and nuts. I started this as an email. I had photos, I still plan to send this to you with the accompanying photos. I see serious concerns about the potential impact of the solar farm on our farm and surrounding environment. Numerous studies documented the effects of solar farms on microclimates, including increasing ambient temperatures. Such changes would harm our crops, live socks, as well as using, the use of, potential use of herbicides and pesticides. Again, we're running an organic farm. The proposed project area also includes wetlands that provide vital ecosystems and services. It develop, if developed, these wetlands and the biodiversity they support will permanently be lost. Additionally, the town code specifically states solar farms cannot be built on land classified as prime farmland. My husband already went over that. Climate conditions in New York State have become increasingly severe and unpredictable lately. With stronger storms and more frequent flooding, the proposed site is on a flood-prone area. It is not a question of if it will flood, but when. Nearby towns have already experienced catastrophic damage and even the loss of entire neighborhoods due to flooding, for example, Vestal. Placing a solar farm in a flood zone is irresponsible and dangerous. Even in the event of a flood, 11 acres of solar infrastructure could become hazardous debris, polluting rivers, endangering homes, businesses, and public safety. These and other serious concerns are outlined in a letter from Broom County dated October 9th, 2025, which was directly sent to the planning board. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I respectfully urge the planning board to reject this project in order to protect farmland, community, and environment. And I have tons of other notes that I have taken during her presentation, and we will be emailing you more information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Have you done with River Road?
No, I'm not saying...
There's, there's going to be another public hearing for the other solar farm, so everyone knows.
Sorry. Hi, my name's Susan Thomas, I'm from Johnson Road, and I think they did a very nice job of presenting. I don't know why anybody, again, it's just poor site planning. Why would you put something in a flood zone? Something, we've had devastating floods in this area. Those rivers are constantly rising. Why would you put something that's just going to be damaged or destroyed, send debris down the river, damaging other people's property? It just, it does not make any sense. Doesn't make commercial sense for you either to put something there. There are so many more appropriate places to put solar. I'm not against solar, but these locations are just ridiculous.
I'm at 48 Forest Hills Boulevard. I'm just going to mention something that I haven't heard addressed at all during these discussions on the River Road project. It's not just flooding along the Shenango River, it's ice jams. And that stretch of the river is very prone to ice jams, and I don't, I don't understand why that's not being addressed. I just say that.
I live on 1469 River Road. A lot of things I just want to address here that weren't fully brought up, and start off with the loss of flora and fauna. The environmental reports that were mentioned that have no, that say there should be no impact to endangered or threatened species, if I remember my, I haven't looked at it in a while, so I could be wrong on this. If I remember correctly, though, those surveys were done in February or over the winter. Most of the species that would be affected by that are in migration during those times, such as migratory birds, bats, and butterflies, and bees themselves would be in hibernation, so they wouldn't be out and about for, you know, to be seen. So, a new assessment probably needs to be done during those peak times where those species would be available, not during the winter when they are migrating. As for aesthetic resources, the river should probably be marked as a aesthetic resource as it is used recreationally all the time during the spring and summer. People do kayaking, canoeing, fishing, tubing. It's seen on the river all the time. If you look up and down on either side of the river where the dock, where the location is, there is a fishing access site on one end, and on the other end is Shenango Valley State Park. Two major resources that are used constantly for access to the river that are on either side of where this project are going to be. Photos that were mentioned, I, I wonder if any of the photos have been taken from 369 as the property can be seen from 369. I've seen it myself when I've stopped, and I can see the barn in question that, that has been brought up from 369, looking toward the property from there. So, if there are two erect fence in that area on the riverbank, it will be seen. As for travel resources, another thing that needs to be brought up, and you, it was brought up about the exit going in front of Shenango Valley High School, but if they're also going to be using River Road, that also puts them in front of the elementary school. And if they were to go the other direction up Cattellville to River Road, that puts them in front of Shenango Forks High, or School District in general. So, those roads are going to need to be addressed as well for school times for them, for those A comment was made of energy supposed to be coming back to the area. That is not, in, in most cases it does, that's not 100% true, as it is seen with a lot of renewable energy sources. The energy does not actually go back to the area. A specific example I do know of is, this is not solar, this is a wind energy. A lot of wind energy that happens in the upper regions of New York, they don't actually, the energy doesn't, that is generated from those windmills does not go back to New York State. That energy goes into Massachusetts and Maine. So, it does not help the area at all there, it just creates a, a structure. So, if that, if the energy does come back to us here, that's great, but I need, we need assurance that that is the case, not a, yes, this is going to happen, sure. There needs to be something on paper saying that this is happening. Like, needs to be something on paper saying that this is happening. As for community character, I'm sure everyone here can agree, the solar panels in a flood plain, I don't feel that aligns with community character. I know you've all heard it multiple times already. Solar panels in a residential area is wrong, it's not right. If it's done correctly in a residential area, that is one thing. But a farm, it should not be there. If we're putting solar on top of houses, that's one thing, and that is the choice of the property owner. Farms should not be in residential, they should be done in commercial or industrial areas. I thank you for your time today and consideration. That's all I have.
Patricia Racine, Wallace Road. I'm married to someone who loves fishing very much. So I know a little too much about fishing, and he specifically loves the Shenango River. So aside from, and I'm just, you guys can't answer questions, but out of concern for my dear husband. Shenango specifically is great for walleye. That's unique to this area, unique to New York. It's kind of a bragging right for this area is that we have walleye. Great carp in that river. And aside from flooding, and what would that do to the fish population, I'm also curious about what it would do to their migration. The fact that within an hour, the fish will disappear because of the heat. So what does the ambient temperature from the solar power plant, because that's what it is, it's not a farm, the solar power plant, what does the ambient heat do? How does it spread? What does any noise that comes from it, what does that cause? What's the effect? I would hate to see this be something that, oh, we didn't realize until five years after having it there, that the walleye don't migrate anymore. So there should be further investigation into every aspect of the ecosystem. That's it, thank you.
My name's Cassandra Higgins. I bug you guys every time there's one of these meetings. I live at Quinn Estates, 92 Teresa Boulevard. I don't live on River Road, but I'm here just to support these people because hopefully this whole town will, we will all support each other. Because we're faced not only with this proposal from someone who, I heard you say three years you've done this? Three years? Well, I'd like to see what happens when this is done in 20 years. There's a proposal on John Smith Road, which is really bad. And I live across from property, beautiful agricultural property owned by Mr. Bodick. And there's gonna be more meetings about that also. So that's why I'm saying we're here to support these people, because this is all crazy. I wonder how, if, if, if any of these people have seen the, the effects of what these farms look like after 20 years? In our town, a big question is, after 20 years, where are you gonna put the garbage? You're gonna go upstate, you're gonna pay somebody else to, you know, rent land to dump it? Where's it gonna go? We already have a landfill that's full. You already talked about the wetlands. And that river's already full of debris, which was, was never cleaned out as New York State said they were gonna do. They never dredged it. And so, yeah, the flood is a very prominent problem. And one of the biggest questions is how much does a solar farm actually save a customer? Very, very little. It never pays for itself, and that's a proven fact. So how long before it's paid for? What about hail damage? I actually have seen what hail damage does to a solar farm. We just had a hailstorm in Hillcrest that destroyed a lot of property and did a lot of damage to houses. Hail damage will destroy a solar farm in a heartbeat. Snowfall? We get 40 inches one year. 40 inches on a solar farm, how long is it gonna clean them off? And they're not gonna work in the meantime, obviously. How long is the actual solar farm builder responsible for the farm? Nobody's answered that question. And if it doesn't produce enough electricity to make it worth it, are they responsible? Is there any kind of an insurance policy against that? What if it doesn't, what if it doesn't pay for itself? Do you just tear it down? The land is no longer usable. It does contaminate the soil. While Jody was speaking, I was looking at my phone, looking up on Google, answering some of the questions, or asking some of the questions she was trying to answer about contamination. People are livid. Go on Google. People are livid about what's happened where they have solar farms. That's all you need for proof, is the experience that people have had. And as our planning board, I would hope our town would represent us, not the companies that are making lots of money doing this. The one thing we should be doing is trying to figure out how the agricultural land around here is not devastating people trying to pay taxes to hang on to it. They should be doing agricultural things with it, and that's what you guys should be doing. You got the best land in the state. Okay, it's, it's, it's a money grab, basically. They lease the land, they pay the guy who, who owns the land, it can't afford to live there anymore. It's the only way he can live there. So he leases the land to a solar farm because these guys come to town from someplace else. And he makes a million dollars for, you know, for the lease, and, and that's why. And we all know that. Look at Google, and you'll see what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Russen. I live at 32 Johnson Road. I'm the chairperson for Nimmensburg Neighbors Against Solar Factory in our neighborhood. I was giving some papers tonight, which I wasn't expecting. I will make copies and give them to the planning board and the town board. It's from the Director of Waterman Conservatory. He tried to work with the solar farm on Robinson Hill Road next to Traditions Glen. And we all know that flooded and ruined the trails for Traditions. But anyway, he says, "My hope is that the publicity and outcry surrounding this project will raise awareness, encourage those in public service and the community at large to push for better site selection for subsequent projects." The slope, the hill in Nimmensburg is not the site. Next to a river is not the site. We need to put these on the top of buildings and preserve our land. And I wasn't aware when you removed 23 acres of forest of the trees, the roots are removed. That causes flat flooding, and we already have flooding. The other thing I just wanted to mention briefly, I know you only get five minutes. The brown long-eared bat was, if you Google that, it will say it's in the town of Shenango. The study that Cipriani did, the environmental study, nobody came on site. They just used maps and data. And they said the brown-eared, long-eared bat, which is endangered, was 60 miles away from this project in town of Shenango. Well, no one told the bats, because all I see are videos of bats being sent to me. And so that has been reported to DEC. I've sent emails, and others have, and that is going to be looked into. This AM, this morning, I had a Zoom done with Senator Webb's office, and they want feedback from the planning board tonight in every meeting. And they are for responsible solar, clean, green energy, not storing neighborhoods. The last town board meeting, a gentleman spoke, and he was, he had the CDL license, and he is Hazmet certified. You have to be Hazmet certified to transfer solar panels because if there's an accident, because of the cadmium and lead in it, leaching into the soil. So, and then the other thing is, the project for 10 Grandview Drive, the community project, which is a joke, that's a lease for five years. And the company, Cipriani's, they're down in South America, Panama. What are they gonna do after five years, and if they pull out? Those solar panels could stay there if he doesn't rent to anyone else and deteriorate, leach into the soil. And I'm not gonna stand here, because I come to every meeting and say the same thing, but please just consider the environment and the next generation. Thank you.
Barbara Seifer, Johnson Road. I just want to say that I come here, meeting after meeting, and we say the same things over and over. And we sit here and we look at you people, and this is gonna be highly unpopular with you all, but you are extremely disrespectful to the residents who take time out of their evening to come here, shaking your heads, putting your heads in your hands, reading, looking at your computers. We deserve the respect to be heard. This is about our homes. And you're, I don't know if you get paid to be there or not, but this is my first foray with coming to these town government things, and I have to tell you, I am totally turned off, completely disappointed. That's it.
We are no different than you, and you people. Some of you are very, very respectable and understand. You know who you are. There are other people that have been here for months that are rude and condescending to us, like we are the ones trying to build the solar farm. You have no idea how we feel about it, yet you attack us like we are them, okay? We are volunteers. I would much rather be at home with my children right now than listening to people that are insulting me, like I have your worst interest in mind, okay? I have heard the same things for five months. I feel just like you, but we have to do due process.
Is there, is there anyone else that'd like to speak about the project? Okay, I'd like to close the, the public hearing for tonight. And it'll be postponed until. Next meeting.
The, the second solar project public hearing will be opening shortly.
So now we're moving on to the Cipriani solar farm. What we'd like to do first is have a discussion. If anyone has some comments, that everyone get a chance to review the proposal that we received.
So, Mr. Chairman, just as a refresher, at the last meeting, the proposals from the companies, I think, were reviewed, and the board said, all right, let's go with Wendell and review their contract. They've sent us their contract, we've reviewed it. Alex and I have no particular issues with the terms of their contract. Alex was satisfied that the scope of work they've proposed is suitable for review of the stormwater issues regarding the Cipriani project. And so it would then be appropriate for a motion to authorize you to sign the contract with Wendell so that the third-party engineering review of the stormwater impacts of this project could be, you know, more thoroughly analyzed. Is there a motion for that? A motion and a second, yes.
I'll make a motion for that. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the Wendell proposal. And a second, can we have a vote?
Mr. Bowlin?
Aye.
Mr. Carnegie?
Aye.
Mr. Zener?
Aye.
Mr. Eldridge?
Aye.
Mr. Danley?
Aye. So we'll move forward with getting that signed and put in place and get started. At this point, we'll open the public hearing for the Cipriani project. Same rules, if anyone has something to speak, come up to the microphone, and we'll enjoy listening to what you have to say.
Dave Russen, 32 Johnson Road. For those of you that were here earlier, and I think some of your panel was also, you kinda know that the Cipriani deal is in the wrong location. You don't build solar farms above a community. We have flooding problems already, and we don't need any more. All you have to do is look, come up into our neighborhood, and you're all supposed to be coming up there. I believe you're all gonna come up. And just take a look around, and you'll see exactly what we mean. They have not mitigated what happens above Wallace and comes down. This project should not go through. It's to the detriment of our neighborhood and the townspeople. You just, you gotta make common sense out of this. That's all it is, is common sense. It just does not belong there. I don't care whether they're saying this, they're saying this, anything about it. It just does not belong there. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Mary Mulaney. I live at 2 Bowland Road. And let me first say that I am a longtime tree hugger, an environmentalist, and a proponent of green renewable energy. However, does anyone else see the irony behind clearcutting generational forest lands in the name of green energy? And putting in a solar farm which is not agricultural? It's a solar facility, it's a solar field. Taking green space and in essence raping it and marring the hillside for life. Mother Nature has already provided the engineering skills to absorb stormwater at a Herculean rate. We are surrounded by urban sprawl and brown zones throughout our neighboring areas. Why create a new one? Who in their right mind would think it was a good idea to clearcut forest land, creating yet another brown zone in an area where we seek sanctuary from the surrounding urban sprawl? The question should be, where are these brown, where are these brown zones that we can build upon and give new life to them? These are the questions we should be asking and having our planning board ask. By asking an entire neighborhood to give up their sense of safety from stormwater flooding and landslides in the name of greed from a few people that are taking so much with no risk or have any stock in our neighborhood that would affect us, seems to be a red flag to all of us. to all of us. To halt such an aggressive factory operation beside a quiet community of homes and parklands that have thrived by, thrived by providing safe refuge from this industrialized world. Now that the DHC has begun their investigation, I hope you too will come to the conclusion that raping our land in the name of progress is not the answer. The conclusion you need to come to should be a relocation of the Cipriani Solar Factory where no harm would endanger such a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kathleen Burke. I reside at 37 Hickory Road. I'd like to thank you for your time listening to us. I concur with the two people that spoke before me. I just want to state, I already said a lot before, so I just want to reiterate that I'm concerned about the flooding. Living where I live, I've, I've witnessed numerous devastating floods to our neighborhood. And I just wish that, or I hope that you all consider not moving forward with this project. And thank you for your time.
And I'm Nancy Ramsey, and I live at 911 Front Street in the town of Dickinson. I just want to have you think about going back to the beginning of this. Somebody owns some property somewhere and probably got thinking, what can I do with my property that will give me maybe some income, money, whatever you want to call it? Solar. All right. But did this person know about our community, about the towns of Dickinson and the towns of Shenango, where we have suffered through two major floods because the water pours down from that same area that person owns? Did he know that or she know that? I don't know who this person is. But we are really struggling now. Every one of the people in this room are really worried. I'm really worried. I told you before, and I misspoke, I think I said 47. We only had three and one-half feet of water on our first level. Forty-two inches. So I'm just asking, please, think seriously about your constituents in the town of Shenango and your neighbors in the town of Dickinson, who raise their families here, enjoy a beautiful life here, even though we have Front Street running up and down and that's busy, but we have created two beautiful neighborhoods and a lot of other areas also. But I'm thinking of where I particularly live. Please, think of us. Look at our neighborhood. Think what it would be like with a solar farm and then having all this water again pour down. It, it's just mind-boggling for me to think this is going to happen again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me adjust this. Good evening, Board. My name is Jim Brewster, 268 Mary Drive. Caveats, these are my thoughts only and do not reflect my employer or my affiliation with the town. So I bring 35 years of experience as an operational meteorologist and 15 years as a practicing hydrologist to the table tonight. I'm considered a leading expert in flash flood detection and prediction across the southern tier, central New York and northeastern Pennsylvania. And I do have some experience with Seeker, which I'll get to later. What I wanted to offer tonight was simply the fact that I do concur with what has been said by both, by all of the parties, the residents and including my scientific peers over the last several months. There's, there's really no doubt that there is a significant flooding issue on that property and in the Smith Hill Drainage Basin. However, as you, as you know, there's no perfect solution to mitigating flood risk. It's simply unattainable. So engineering can only go so far. So what you'll have to decide is what is the acceptable, if there is any risk, excuse me, what is, what is the acceptable level of risk versus perceived reward if there is any, you know, any, anything? So what I, again, what I wanted to offer was, since you just approved the hydraulic engineering firm, and we've really only seen cursory information, at least the public has pertaining to the runoff studies, what I would like to recommend, if you're still able to scope some more, typically from my understanding, design storms are based on 24-hour rainfall and the annual recurrence interval. You're lucky, in my opinion, to, that the engineers have moved it up to using the 100-year event, because again, my understanding is typically it's a 10 or 25, maybe a 50-year storm that's generally used in design engineering. What I would like you to propose to be studied would be to use high-intensity storms. So I would recommend using the three-hour and the six-hour 100-year event, both the median rainfall and the 90th percentile rainfall. There you will really see the response from that basin with and without trees and whatever other parameters you want to put into it. Secondly, I would also ask that you require them to run two dehydraulic models. In this way, we'll better capture the overland runoff simulations versus just channeled-type studies. Lastly, you've just gone through a Seeker review, a fairly comprehensive one at that, and that is a very powerful tool that you can use to move this project on as well. I think, you know, we've heard numerous discussions about flooding, we've heard about habitats. All of that will be captured in a Seeker evaluation. I don't know if I see eye to eye with exactly how Seeker was conducted tonight, but it is a very powerful tool, and I'd be hard-pressed to imagine a board concluding that there were not moderate to large environmental impacts with this particular one and perhaps the other solar farms. So again, to me, that would result in a positive declaration, and you have the power to, to use that tool as was once used in evaluating the cell tower project. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, Jim, can you email that to the board?
Yeah, I got to polish it. Just a little.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'm Karen Allen. I am reading my husband's letter. He had to go to work, but you met him just earlier. Good evening, my name is Jeff Allen, and I've served nearly 25 years as a professional firefighter and paramedic for the city of Binghamton and here in the town of Shenango since I was 16 years old. I am here tonight to speak about the proposed solar farm in Nimmensburg and the serious safety emergency response concerns it presents. I grew up on the lower part of Smith Hill Road and spent my entire childhood in Nimmensburg. My mother-in-law, who is here currently too, still resides in the home. I played baseball and soccer with the Nimmensburg Youth Association and spent my summers at Hyder's Park Summer Fund Program and even own the original fire engine from Nimmensburg's Fire Company. From my experience on the fire line, I know firsthand that fire hazards are not hypothetical, they are real, fast-moving, and can be unpredictable. Large-scale solar farms present unique challenges that are very different from traditional structure fires. Solar panels are energized even when disconnected from the grid, making firefighting extremely dangerous. Fires in solar farms have occurred across New York and the country. And I can assure you, there are complex incidents that often require specialized equipment, extensive training, and considerable time to safety and to safely extinguish. One critical issue with this project is that there is currently no approved emergency response plan in coordination with local first responders. The Broom County Department of Planning and Economic Development expressed this exact concern about the lack of planning in the River Road Project's 239 review. And I'm sure it is echoed in the Nimmensburg project as well. Without a clear practical plan or practice plan, local fire departments would, would be at a severe disadvantage responding to an incident, putting both firefighters and the surrounding community at risk. Even for relatively small fires, solar panels can reignite after ignition, initial suppression, release toxic smoke, and complicate access to the site. Imagine trying to light, trying to fight a fire in the middle of a large solar array with limited access and energized panels. This is a scenario no firefighter wants to face, but is a real possibility here. This is not just a theoretical risk. In July 2023, a fire broke out at a solar farm in Chawmont, New York. The blaze burned for four days, emitting large amounts of potentially toxic smoke and prompting air quality alerts. Over 30 fire departments responded and local residents were advised to shelter in place. The fire was so intense that firefighters were unsure whether to apply water or foam as they lacked information on the chemicals involved. This, this incidence underscores the need for comprehensive emergency response and planning and coordination. The safety of our community and the men and women who risked their lives to protect it must come first. I urge the planning board to require a fully developed and tested emergency response plan which has full approval from all agencies in our town before any approved approvals are granted. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you.
Let me give you a little tidbit. Some of the people here tonight were questioning whether Mr. Keshu, the owner of the property, you know, and I don't dispute his right to do what he wants with the property. I mean, that's, that's his prerogative. However, I'm going to tell you something. He didn't start this, he didn't get into this, the meat of this thing until I believe 22, 23, right in that area. His nephew lived on Wallace Road, 49 Wallace Road to be exact. He knows exactly about the flooding. And I'm a conspiratorialist, you see. I believe he waited to start this solar farm deal until his nephew sold the house because he didn't want his nephew to get flooded again. That's only part of it, but that's a little tidbit for you there. And I know how this Keshu operates. And there's a lot more to what he did, and it's going to come out, the DHC will be on top of that soon. So he knows exactly what he's doing. Cipriani knows exactly what they're doing. And that's just a little tidbit that I think you might enjoy. Because as a matter of fact, this guy's mother was his older sister. She's a Keshu, a Salibi now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I know I had my fifth minutes, but I just want to say thank you to all the residents coming out that care about our community. I know the board cares about our community, but we feel very frustrated because we don't get to vote on this. You do. So we try and make our point, and we understand you're going to be looking at studies and voting what the studies say, even though I don't think the studies show the whole picture. And during a rainstorm, I'd love you to drive through our neighborhood and see the flooding that does happen every heavy rainstorm. And keep coming out, keep making, you know, and we'll try and be more courteous. We do appreciate you, but we're frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there is no one else that would like to speak, we will close it for tonight. Be postponed and it'll be open again at our next meeting. Is there anything else the board would like to speak to? Anything? No, no, we needed, we're all done.
Hi, my name is Kay Debbin, and I live at Five Heights Court, right where it's going to come down, and I live right behind the park. I know you guys do not have a big job here sitting, having to listen to us, but we also are sitting here waiting and waiting and waiting. You know, I know the first time we had too many people, so we blocked it. And then what's happened is, it's almost like we're second-class citizens, okay? You got chickens before us, you got something else before us, and something else, and then it says, oh, at seven o'clock, you're going to have your say for the Cipriani Solar Farm. And the next thing you know, somebody else is first, and we're back at the tail end again, every time you have a meeting. I just, I don't think, it's such a big issue with that whole neighborhood that you're impacting, that I just think, you feel like you're being disrespected. You know, I know you guys are trying hard, you're doing what you can do, and I know it's tough sitting there and listening and listening, but this is our homes, we live there. If you lived in one of our houses, would you want to sit there every time a rainstorm came and think, oh, is it going to flood today? Is the power going to go out? What's going to happen? It's a reality for all of us. So I would hope that you would at least consider it. And sometimes put yourself in our shoes, and we know that you're trying very hard to. But there's a lot of data out there that I'm sure hasn't been done yet, that needs to be done about the flooding and other issues that I'm sure you don't have the data yet. So there's a lot of work to be done. I'm hoping that you will look at the impact that this will have on our community, and I know you have your mission statements and stuff, but if you look at your mission statements, can you really say that you're abiding by them? Thank you for all the time that you spend on this.
Thank you. Not to beat a dead horse, but no, quickly, I'm just saying. Look, we've got flooding problems now, major flooding problems. They haven't mitigated it and they may not. Certainly, without a doubt, it's only common sense having a solar farm added to that and right there. It's absolutely ridiculous, guys, you know? I mean, it's common sense. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Susan Thomas from Johnson Road. I just want to bring up too, I know we're talking about flooding and overland, but a lot of the problem too is groundwater. So they talk about retention or detention bonds. All that water sitting there is going to go somewhere eventually, and unfortunately likes to head to my basement, I think. So I just don't understand how this gentleman, he received all these tax credits for foresting, reforestation, and the state is trying to reforest areas. I mean, I listened to NPR, and they're constantly talking about these different programs. How, how does it make any sense to clearcut and just get rid of all that? Like, it's yin and yang. It's just, it's not, it's not practical. There are better places to put solar farms. Our homes are, are investments. I mean, we're a pretty modest neighborhood. We're not, you know, a super wealthy neighborhood. And, and our homes are where our investment is. And it's pretty disturbing to think that could all be wiped out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing for tonight. It'll still be postponed until next meeting. It'll be opened again. And is there anything else for the board? Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Motion, second.
I was just going to possibly just recap, right? So Cipriani hasn't been back to a meeting since three or four meetings ago. I know they're waiting for the third-party stormwater reviewer to chime in. I think we also told them, Alex, that we wanted to see their road use plan as well. So we should follow up with them on that and also just let Cipriani know the reviewer's been retained. You know, there's a proposed schedule for the reviewer to finish their process. There's going to be an initial meeting that they've requested, the third-party reviewer, with Alex, myself, and I think the chairman of the planning board to just, you know, say hello, go over some of their initial thoughts and things. They will be attending a meeting. I think they have up to five meetings that they would be attending in their proposal, so we'll be able to hopefully hear from them. Let me just see if I can find that. Alex, you don't have it immediately handy, do you? You can find it before I do, that'd be great. Well, so we'll certainly get that review schedule from the proposal on the town's website, Diane. We should put that up just so the public can get a sense of what the third-party reviewer is recommending or indicating as kind of their action item dates. Is that way you folks know when we can expect to hear back from them? And then, you know, earlier tonight, of course, I think the tomatoes application was at the point where the, it's as complete as that one's going to be, and so it was appropriate to go through that initial review, hot take on, okay, what's the board want to focus on for the environmental review? Because Cipriani has not been back in several months, I'm not sure if they're planning on submitting any updates to their project, but we might be in a position to do that similar kind of analysis, high-level, get Alex to move forward on the deep environmental review, you know, taking into account the public's concerns, of course, which we've heard for several meetings in a row, and, you know, focusing on those particular areas. Obviously, the stormwater runoff is primary, I think, to the board at this point, but there are others as well that are very important. Thank you, Alex. So it looks like the third-party reviewer is going to be out here early November. They are planning on having deliberables to the town as a first round of their code submission review and comments on the project in early December with a resubmission and review, a second round to the planning board in early January. So it's going to be a couple of months before the third-party reviewer is finished completing their analysis. So, you know, we've just, we're going to have that time period that I think we're, oh, I had my five minutes. Thanks. But I wanted to give this overview, just so that you folks understand, you know, where we are in the process, right? You know, I understand it's frustrating to come to meeting after meeting. Cipriani has not been here, as you all noticed. It's because the town has been getting this third-party contractor onboard, and you've just heard some of the dates that we're looking at for when we're going to get their feedback. Once we have their feedback, the planning board can really grapple further with, you know, what changes, if any, can be made to this project, or should the project, you know, be denied? And that's, I'm not saying a value judgment one way or the other, but that's the process that we're currently on track for at this point. So, you know, kind of just wanted to give you guys that overview as to where we are right now, especially since we've got that third-party contractor onboard.
And just so you're aware, some of the, one gentleman here asked, you know, like, "Why is it taking so long?" If we don't cross the Ts and dot the Is, if we get to the point where we make a determination that we're going to possibly deny this, if they have grounds, they can take this to a higher court, sue the town, go to the state. The state wants solar, so you could only imagine what the state would do. So we need to do everything in our power to cross the Ts and dot the Is for you in order to move forward.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.